I would like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order. Let the record reflect, it is Thursday, February 1, 2024, and the time is 10:04. I'm gonna call on the Board Secretary to call the roll.
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha, my ka'ako.
Trustee Alapa.
Present.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Present.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Present.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Present.
You have nine trustees, you have quorum.
Thank you. Aloha, ka'ako, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/live. Joining us today, we have our CEO, Kapoana Stacy Ferreira, and I would like to ask Stacy to introduce any administrative staff joining us today.
Mahalo, Chair, good morning trustees. Joining us today is COO Casey Brown, Interim General Counsel Everett Ota, CFO Ramona Hink, Interim Senior Legal Counsel Nishi Ozawa, Financial Analyst Grace Chen, IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Dave Kozuki, IT Systems Engineer and Administrator Dan Santos. Mahalo.
Thank you. First on our agenda is approval of minutes. Lehuu, do we have anyone to speak on any of these items?
No one is signed up to speak on these items.
I'll entertain a motion to approve all of the minutes. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Thank you. Moving on on our agenda, number three, Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. Lehuu, is anyone signed up to speak on any of the items under 3A?
No one is signed up to speak on these items.
I'll turn this time over to Trustee Akaka.
The Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, having met on January 31, 2024, and after full and free discussion, recommends approval of the following motion to the Board of Trustees. Motion 1, move to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, items 1 through 7, as listed on Matrix 1, 2024, 2024, OHA State Legislature package, January 31, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Thank you. Trustee Akaka.
Motion 2, move to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, items 1 through 13, as listed on Matrix 2, 2024, OHA State Legislature Bill Positions Related to Measures Naming OHA, January 31, 2024, along with the following revisions. To add bill HB 2762 to Matrix 2 with the bill position of comment, bill position changes item 1 SB 2021 from opposed to comment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Yes.
It's the first matrix, right? So.
This is the second matrix.
Okay. No, because sometimes in the beginning, you don't want to do anything but watch it. So is this, I mean, what?
The first motion was Matrix 1, this is the second motion regarding Matrix 2.
Okay. Okay. Okay, no, no, I just wanted to make sure that I saw that from opposed to comment. Okay, I don't know how we got to oppose in the beginning, okay? No, I just wanted to understand it.
Okay. Any other discussions? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Mahalo. I just also want to clarify, Trustee Ahuna, that Matrix 1 is our legislative package, Matrix 2 are bills that specifically name OHA, and Matrix 3 are bills that we are, of interest to us, that we are monitoring, commenting, supporting or opposing.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
But it's a long journey. We don't have to come off the bat and, okay, thank you.
Trustee Akaka.
Motion 3, move to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, items 1 through 156, excluding items 5, 69, and 84, as listed on Matrix 3, 2024, OHA State Legislature Positions Related to Measures Affecting Native Hawaiians, January 31, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Trustee Akaka.
Motion 4, move to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, items 5 and 69, as listed on Matrix 3, 2024, OHA State Legislature Positions Related to Measures Affecting Native Hawaiians, January 31, 2024, bill position from item 5 HB 1794 as comment, and item 69 HB 2540 as comment.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Trustee Akaka.
Motion 5, move to approve administration's recommendations on new bills, items 84. Item 84 is listed on Matrix 3, 2024, OHA State Legislature Positions Related to Measures Affecting Native Hawaiians, January 31, 2024, with a bill position of item 84 SB 2773 as support.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to make note that I will be abstaining, and my reasons were stated at the previous EAE meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina is abstaining. Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have eight yes votes and one abstention.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is items 3B, 1 through 4, Committee on Resource Management. Number 1 is action item RM 241, approve the designation of Stacy Kealohalani Ferreira as the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Authorized Organizational Representative for the Administration for Native Americans, American Rescue Plan Act, Emergency Native Language Funding Opportunity for Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders Grant Award, Supporting OHA's Native Hawaiian Language Preservation and Maintenance, Community-Based Research Project. Lehuu, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this first action item?
No one is signed up to speak on this action.
Trustee Wahe'e.
I'm moving, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Thank you. The second item, action RM 2402, approve OHA funding of the 13th Festival of Pacific Arts and Culture, Hawaii 2024, Ho'oulu Lahui Regenerating Oceania. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve, I move to approve and authorize the disbursement of 1.5 million to fund the 13th Festival of Pacific Arts and Culture Hawaii 2024, Ho'oulu Lahui Regenerating Oceania.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe we should give them $3 million, but I mean, I have the votes today, so I just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
I'd like to just mention that visiting with us today is Aaron and Makalani Sala, coming to see if we had any more questions. Thank you for coming, Aaron and Maka. Calling for the vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Thank you. The third item is action item RM 2403, approve OHA funding of fiscal year 2024 third quarter sponsorships. Lehuu, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move to approve and authorize the following fiscal year 2024 third quarter sponsorships dispersment totaling $25,000 to Le'aloja, Le'le' aloha, I mean, I meant to say, in the amount of $10,000. Hale'kepa in the amount of $15,000 for total recommendation amount of $25,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussions? Roll call?
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Yes.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
The last item under Committee on Resource Management is action item RM 2404, OHA by-enium budget for the fiscal by-enium periods 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025, realignment number 1, core and non-core realignments. Lehuu, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Trustee Wahe'e.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the fiscal by-enium budget realignment number 1, core and non-core for the fiscal by-enium periods 2023 to 2024, and 2024 to 2025, as summarized, that attachment number 1.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call?
Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Mahalo. Trustee Wahe'e. And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
You have nine yes votes.
Thank you. The last action item on the agenda is action item BOT 2401, appointment of Everett Ota to the Public Land Trust Working Group on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs pursuant to Section 3B of Act 226, Session Laws of Hawaii 2022.
So move.
Second.
Lehuu, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Mahalo, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, for the reasons I stated at the previous meeting, I believe it should be someone on our board. If we are replacing Trustee Trask, who did a great job while she was there, I think it should be someone on this board who has a vested interest. I'm not saying Everett Ota does not, but for the reasons I stated before, it was actually because I believe that there should be an opportunity to use leverage, especially down at that capital, our friendships, relationships. You know, if you view the total board, everyone brings something to the table, and I believe we need to utilize those talents. And so because of that, I'd like to propose, Brickwood Galutaria, Trustee Galutaria. So I don't know if I have to amend, I may have to amend this motion. Potentially get a second, I don't know how that works. Klein, maybe you can fill me in?
Okay. Any more discussion? Before we amend the motion, I just wanted to give the trustees some background of why Everett Ota was chosen. He has worked as a subject matter expert in public land trust issues since he joined the Corporate Counsel Office in 2016. He served on the internal OHA Seated Lands and Public Land Trust Working Group and oversaw the completion of the 2018 report to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs on the accuracy and completeness of a report by the Department of Land and Natural Resources to the Hawaii State Legislature on public land trust receipts for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2016, by NNK, the CPAs that audited the state. He has also made numerous presentations to the OHA BOT, state legislature, state agencies, and community on the public land trust, and has drafted testimony and legislation on the public land trust. He has also served as support staff with the Act 226, Public Land Trust Working Group since we started. He truly is the next best and appropriate person to serve on this group, who has an understanding and ability to assist this group to move forward. As a reminder, Trustee Trask was chosen for this group because of her expertise in the subject matter and legal background, not because she is a trustee. Zuri was asked to attend the PLT Working Group by Colin Kippen so that he could assist in writing the report for our group, and that was all. So if you would like to amend the, the, the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can we have the original motion?
How would you like to amend the motion?
By proposing that Trustee Galutaria become the new member of the PLT Working Group. Yeah, yeah, does he have to retract? No, okay.
Before we go forward, can I get a consensus of the board on where the different trustees are at with this?
Well, I think we're making the motion, and then we'll have a discussion. Trustee Akaka.
We're in the discussion right now.
Yeah, okay. So if I make the new motion, and somebody seconds it.
Excuse me, trustees, I think we're violating the sunshine law.
We're not, trustee.
That what was noticed on the public agenda is the appointment of Everett Ota. That is what went out to our beneficiaries. So right now, if you make that change, there's no notice on the public agenda. What was noticed to our people was Everett Ota. That is the only notice that went out.
Understand that, trustee.
If there's going to be another vote, we need to put it on another.
That's fine.
The second thing I want to say is that you're absolutely right. The reason why I was put on the public land trust was because of my expertise, and I know that Everett has it. If the proposal is to replace person with expertise, then let me notify you that I, on this public record, retract my request to be removed from the public land trust, and I will return to work there. What we need is somebody capable that has the background, not somebody that's a trustee that doesn't.
That is not my request, Trustee Trask, for the record. That is not my request.
My request is to change the public agenda and replace somebody else's name.
We have also in the room.
I don't think we can do it, we didn't put it on the notice.
We have also in the room, thank you very much.
Okay. I'm gonna have to defer this again and correct the agenda for the next meeting.
You know, Chair, I just would like to point out that before we correct the chair, the agenda for the next meeting, I don't want to rehash the same thing that we're doing now. So I want the agenda to reflect that Trustee Trask has reconsidered and will return to the Public Land Trust Working Group so that we can have a trustee on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Trask. So counsel has advised me that we do have a motion, a pending motion, that's been moved and seconded, so we will vote on the motion.
Sorry, was Trustee Souza's amendment not?
Not.
Not proper?
Not. Wasn't proper.
For the reasons that Trustee Trask stated.
Yes.
His own.
Okay. I just want on the record, Madam Chair, that this kind of thing should be discussed with the board, and I truly believe that this is a board decision, PLT, I mean, getting our 20%, understanding where our 20% is coming from, super important. And I think that's why we all ran for office at the end of the day, so I think we should be all discussing this, be able to choose the member, and that's how I feel, and that's why I want it on the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Yes.
This is such an important matter that we need to be of one mind as closely as we possibly can. By way of technicality, we have a motion before us that needs to be voted upon. We recognize that. But it doesn't allow for the kind of discussion and interaction that we really need to have as a board. We respect and honor the sunshine law, and that's why we haven't had this discussion privately, or I've not been part of it at all. But there are some inadequacies with the sunshine laws formulation that prevent us from actually talking about something like this, who should serve. I feel that we, first of all, need to decide what the purpose we, what purpose we have in appointing someone to the PLT Working Group. Do we want somebody who has subject matter expertise? Or do we want somebody who has political capacity to be able to forward the interests of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and the Hawaiian people? And we need to clarify that, the criteria first and foremost. Secondly, we need to discuss the potential candidates that are available. I'd like to ask, Madam Chair, perhaps with counsel's advice, what form exists for us to have that discussion so that we can come up with the criteria for the position and the potential candidates?
Trustee, it's a valid question. I would, the way I would do that is instead of selecting a candidate to vote on, because that would require a decision of the board, I would recommend the agenda item that seeks the board's discussion without a decision about the qualifications of the person to be what the board wants to nominate for.
So counsel, how would we move from where we are now with a motion on the table to getting to a place where we can have an agendized item that calls for a discussion?
Well, you have a pending, you have a pending motion on the table to take a vote on.
We have a motion and a second, so I mean, we can.
Counsel's not being recorded. Okay, now you're on.
Okay, thank you, Lehuu. Okay, so there is a pending motion, it's been seconded. There should be discussion on the motion, mistress.
I'm thinking, but, Madam Chair, my fear is that according to Roberts rules, if this motion fails, we can't bring it back again a second time. And if we're going to discuss this matter, I don't, I want Everett to still be available as an option, you know, during that discussion, so maybe we can either defer this or, see, but we would have to agendize it differently anyway. I don't know. I don't know what the Roberts rules is to table it, I guess, or something. Um, okay, so before I make a motion to defer this, I would want to let everyone have their discussion first, in case they want to say something.
He said that we could defer it, but John is referring to Roberts rules, that once you defer it, you cannot bring it back.
What's happening?
Oh, fails. Yeah, and he wanted.
So, so trustee, what you have is a pending motion, it's been seconded, okay? The decision, the discussion you folks have can relate to the action item that's pending for the board. You can discuss Everett's, the reasons why or for or against Everett's appointment to this position. If further discussion is needed. There's a pending motion, okay? It needs to either be deferred or voted on, okay? If another discussion comes up in future, you want to consider more names, other positions, then it should be appropriately agendized, disclosed to the public who the folks are that you're considering for the position. That's where we're at now.
So maybe defer the motion today and also the agenda is discussion.
I believe that's proper, trustee.
Okay, um.
Trustees, we have to stick with the sunshine law and what our own agenda says. What happens with action item C? It moves to appoint Everett to the public land trust. It was seconded, we had a discussion. Trustee input was there shouldn't be staff. It should be a trustee. I understand that. Following that, I notify the board on the public record that I retract by stepping back, and I will rejoin the public land trust. That resolves the problem. We cannot take action on this. Defer the motion. As John has pointed out, it does not return. And the reason why it doesn't return is twofold. The primary one is that we don't have a vacancy on the public land trust because the trustee that stepped out, Millilani Trask, decided to step back in. So the motion to appoint Everett should be voted down. We don't need him anymore because the vacancy does not exist. I return to the public land trust. And what I want to say is, the reason why I looked to step out was because my work at OHA is so burdensome. But when it comes to the public land trust, we can't have people in there that don't know what they are doing. And I know this area. You don't want Everett in, I'll step back and do the work. It'd be a lot easier for our board to move, for our people forward if we had trustees with a background to do the work. But I am not going to step out of this position and see trustees go in that have no idea and no background on where we are with our peoples and defending our trust.
Thank you, Trustee Trask. I'm going to defer this motion.
It does not. And Hulu, you will put me down as a member of the public land trust following this meeting, this public notice that I return. Thank you.
We'll have to investigate how that works, um, trustee Trask. Okay, I'm going to move on. Um. Next on the agenda is community concerns and celebrations. Do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up to speak under community concerns.
Before we recuse ourselves into executive session, I want to announce that we will return to open session and continue the live stream. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on the executive session agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Can I get a motion to recuse ourselves into executive se- session pursuant to HRS section ninety two dash five?
So moved, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa.
Alapa.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Souza. Trustee Trask.
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe. Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Yes.
We have nine yes votes. We will be moving into executive session.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Casey.
May, may I request that Kiopu join us in executive session, given her position and her role? Um, I, I would like her to hear and understand where the status is on this matter.
Okay.
Thank you.